I call to order the February 23rd, 2016 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Welcome to everyone joining us tonight here in the council chamber as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh Community Media Services. We are pleased to have citizens participate in their local government in any way, so welcome to all. Would the city clerk please take the roll call?
Peck.
Here.
Pansky.
Here.
Stepanik.
Clark.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Present six.
Deputy Mayor Peck, please lay this in invocation and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance with our students afterward.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
Come forward. Flag is over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I just stay there? I have something for each of you.
Yay.
You have a certificate for your participation. I want to turn that way to face the audience. Kevin Lentz? Kevin, what grade was school did you go to? What grade do you get in? What was your favorite subject? There you go. Another one from Smith. Do you know the name? This way. This way. Give us your name, school, favorite subject.
My name is Missy Maloney. I go to Smith School. I'm in third grade and my favorite subject is science.
Oh, science. There you go. How would you pronounce this? Roman entry, Mason.
MacArthur.
Thank you. Nice and well for every one.
My name is Roman MacArthur Mason and I go to Jefferson Elementary School. I'm in third grade and my favorite subject is reading.
Reading. Colton Felker.
My name is Colton Felker. I go to Jefferson Elementary. I am in third grade and my favorite subject is science.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. And you are dismissed to go home. First on the agenda tonight is citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh and the common council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electionary. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to step forward? I see no one, so we'll move to the consent agenda items. These items are those of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda before discussion. One, approval of bills presented by the finance director. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from January 7, 2016. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from February 9, 2016. Receipt of claim filed by the city's insurance company, A. Kaylee Steger, for alleged vehicle damage due to a driver to driving over a snow pile Main Street. Resolution 16-62, approve professional service agreement with McMahon Associates, Inc. for inspection, plan reviews, $90,000. Resolution 16-63, approve amendment to inspection services division fee scheduling, deleting electrical contract license fees, and clarification on calculating building permit fees. Resolution 16-64, award bid for HVAC improvements, media services, phone room for general services, to get mechanical services, $39,800. Resolution 16-61-65, award bid for public works contract number 16-19 to H&amp;A Industries, Inc. for water filtration plant replacement, filtration plant equipment replacement, $523,424. Resolution 16-66, award bid for public works contract number 16-03 to PTS Contractors, Inc. for Snell Road West lift station and interceptor sewer, $7,324,034. Resolution 16-67, approve engineering services agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. for construction-related engineering services for public work contract number Resolution 16-68, approve change order number one for public works contract number 14-10, Southwest Industrial Park Expansion, TID number 23, phases three and four utilities, Resolution 16-69, approve amendment to engineering services agreement with Brown &amp; Caldwell for design and bid support for Furnell Avenue watershed, North Rain Street area detention basin, $31,523. Resolution 16-70, approve distribution of Fisk Gallup trust funds by senior services division to medical services to income-qualified citizens. Resolution 16-71, cancel outstanding checks right off to delinquent and uncollectible accounts. Resolution 16-72, rescind resolution 16-61 and authorize borrowing from trust funds of the state of Wisconsin in the sum of $711,300 for the purpose of financing railroad spur, light removal, and utility infrastructure. Resolution 16-73 through 16-85 are all for special events this year, so I will not read the year or the words of special event. The first is Oshkosh Festivals, Inc. to utilize city streets for the Oshkosh St. Patrick's Day Parade and Party, March 19. Winnebago Auto Ban Society Oshkosh Bird Fest Committee to utilize Monomie Park for Oshkosh Bird Fest, May 7. Terry's Bar to utilize Monomie Park for Terry's Bar Walleye Turnee, May 21. Resolution 16-76, Hoagies Bar to utilize Monomie Park for Hoagies Walleye Warm-Up, May 28. Resolution 16-77, Larry Mees to utilize South Park for the reading of the names ceremony, May 30. Resolution 16-78, Oshkosh Festivals, Inc. to utilize Leach Amphitheater Riverside Parking Lot and City Streets for Oshkosh Iris Fest, 5K and 1-mile Run Walk, June 11 and 12. Oshkosh Fine Arts Association to utilize South Park for the Winnebago Land Art Fair, June 11 and 12. Central Wisconsin Auto Collectors to utilize South Park for the Central Wisconsin Auto Collectors Car Show and Flea Market, June 26. Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter 437 to utilize city streets to hold the Oshkosh Fourth of July Parade, July 4. Resolution 16-82, Mercury Marine Pride and Boats and the Boat Dock to utilize Monomie Park for the Bagel Walleye Club Tournament Series, June 5, July 10, and July 31. Resolution 16-83, Business Improvement District Bid Marketing Consortium to utilize city streets and Opera House Square for the Downtown Oshkosh Chalk Walk, September 10. Patrick Boyce and Jennifer Colwells to utilize Opera House Square for the Vaude Renewal, September 24. Last is resolution 16-85, Oshkosh Festivals, Inc. to utilize dockside restaurant location at 425 Nebraska Street. Nebraska Street to hold Oshkosh Oktoberfest and to utilize city streets and Riverwalk for their 2K Beer Run and Costume Contest, October 20, October 1. Resolution 16-86, approve appointment to the Sustainability Advisory Board. Resolution 16-86-87, approve combination Class B license and operator licenses. That ends the consent agenda. Is anyone from the public that would like to speak to any of these? I will bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
So any discussion?
I would just like to, I think, James, you can probably handle these. We don't need to have. Steve, not that I don't want you to come up, but there's some rather large bid awards on this tonight. These were all covered as part of our CIP, but just, let's see here, the 1665, the water filtration plant equipment replacement, the Snell Road, 1666, Snell Road West Lift Station Interceptor Sewer, and the approve engineering services agreement with AECOM for $801,280. Like I said, these were all approved in our CIP plan, but if you could just give the citizens in the chamber here tonight, as well as those watching and listening, a little flavor behind what those are.
Yeah, awarding the bids for the water filtration plant equipment replacement. You know, the water filtration plant is an industrial facility, if you will. You know, it is responsible for treating and preparing all of the water that we utilize within the city. As a part of doing that, you know, they have equipment that has to operate 24/7/365, and a part of maintaining that equipment periodically means some of it's got to be replaced. The funding for this contract has been spread out over the last three CIPs, so it's kind of combining several CIP items into one larger contract to be able to hopefully get some better pricing. So it's just maintaining the equipment that we need and replacing equipment that needs to be replaced to keep that facility running at its peak. As far as the Snell West Lift Station and Interceptor Sewer, there's currently a small pump station located on what is now West Snell Road, formerly Fountain Avenue. That facility has reached the end of its useful life. In conjunction with the flows that are being generated east of Highway 41 via the prison and other development in that area, we're constructing a new interceptor sewer to redirect several flows primarily from the prison to this new pump station and then utilizing the existing force main infrastructure to get it into a larger interceptor sewer along the river. What this does is it does open up a significant amount of area south of Snell Road, along the Jackson Corridor, for more development. Right now, the sanitary sewer in that area is operating at in excess of 100% of capacity. So in order to relieve the loading off of that smaller sewer, we needed to get a new interceptor sewer and get it over to this new pump station so we can better handle the flows and open up some more area for development ability. The engineering services with AECOM, that is construction management services to oversee the construction of the interceptor sewer and the pump station. Pump station project is very complex with a lot of equipment, machinery, you know, HVAC, you know, any number of things. So it's a level of expertise that we don't have with our in-house staff, so we do need to consult with outside consultants to make sure that what the contractors are proposing complies with the intent of the plans and specs.
Thank you. I'll just-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if Mr. Roloff can answer this one, but item number 15, resolution 16-72, you could let us know why we would want to rescind a resolution that we just approved two weeks ago?
You know, I have to give staff a lot of credit for, there's a lot of technical things that the state wants to get done when we do these loans, and the council approved it at the very last meeting. Right after it was done, Ms. Larson forwarded the information to the state, and the state called us up the next day and said, "We just lowered our rates. Now, you can take the higher rate, or you can rescind your old resolution. We just can't say, 'Yes, we'll take the lower rate.'" The council has to say, "Yes, we'll take the lower rate." So we're going to save about $10,000 by this little action right here. So we thought maybe you would like that idea, so we put it back on the agenda.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you. Thank Ms. Larson for taking the call when she was getting called about that.
Well, thank you, Ms. Larson.
Cosman Herman.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, but I'd like Ms. Larson to come forward. I just got a question on resolution 16-71.
This kind of follows like the deputy mayor with the questions. Can I just give us a little bit background for our citizens, why we're canceling outstanding checks and writing off delinquent and uncollectible accounts?
Sure. That is part of our annual year-end process. We do not stop the collection process. We just remove them from our general ledger.
Okay. So we still have, we have a company that we contract with, or do we send out notices to try to?
We do pursue collections internally. However, we also do have a collections agency.
Okay. And then the delinquent and non-collectibles, those are mostly bankruptcies?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If there are no further comments or questions, I do have one comment on resolution 16-81, which is the Fourth of July Parade that will again be going down Main Street. Main to Irving to Monomie Park. If there are no further questions, would the city clerk please take the roll?
Peck.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
There were no items to remove from the consent agenda, so we'll go to pending ordinances. Ordinance 16-88.
Mr. Mayor, the petitioner has requested that this be pulled from the agenda and laid over until our March 8th meeting.
I have a motion to remove it from consideration till the March meeting.
Second.
Do we discuss before we take the roll? The audience want to come forward? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Now, would the city clerk take the roll?
Peck.
Aye.
Excuse me. Pansky.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance 16-89, approve repealing and recreating Section 2-47 Public Arts and Beautification Committee. Does anyone from the audience want to come forward with any comments? I see no one, so I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I would just like, for the sake of our citizens, if Mr. Roloff or any of the staff can, can I give a background? Maybe Darren, give some background as to exactly what we're doing here and the purpose of this action.
Mr. Birch has been working on this for a number of years, so I'll let him give the background because I think it predates several council members.
Thank you for bringing me up. The background on this is, for a number of years, we've been looking at, well, we've been looking at ways to improve public spaces within the community, and one of the ways to improve public spaces through the community, a lot of other cities, you think of some great cities like Chicago, New York, they have great public art. They use public art to define public spaces. They use public beautification improvements to just to improve the public realm. And what we're doing with this particular, with this particular body is to bring people together to work on, to focus on those type of items throughout the community. With the renewed interest in the neighborhoods of the community, with all the redevelopment we have on going on downtown, with the reconstruction of North Main Street where we did a lot of public improvements, we want to build upon that. We don't really have a body out, a public body, looking at ways to really improve the public realm through public art and through public beautification projects. We have things like downtown with a bid. The bid has the planters, but we don't have, you know, you go into a lot of communities and you'll see a bunch of planters running up and down a major corridor coming in through the community. So those are the kind of things. And art in public parks, you have the Lake Fly project that we're looking at, various things, you know, the Lake Fly, we put in public along the Riverwalk or in some of the parks. So we're forming this body to work on things like that to improve the public realm. It was a body that was in place that, you know, that was handling some of the public gifts, donations. That's not changing. Really what this is changing is really for a group of citizens to come together to work on public beautification arts projects.
Thank you.
I have a question. Not to put you in the spot, what's the board makeup going to be?
We don't know that. We need, there's-
I mean, there's some information that there'll be a council member, Director of the pain, the museum, but roughly how many citizens will be involved in?
There'll be seven citizens, which would be, I think that would include one council member. I think that's what the ordinance says. So it'll be six and one council member. The pain, library, and parks are all ex officio, non-voting members of the committee.
And if citizens want to get involved in this board, how do they, what's the process?
I guess like our normal recruitment process to the board, they would fill an application that they're interested in, then the mayor and council took a point.
And how soon do you think this board and commission can be up and running? I mean, what's your hope, I guess, by summer or spring?
Sure. I think structurally, I mean, internally with the staff, staff is there to support it. Now it's just a matter of getting some people, people appointed to the committee and getting together and starting to work on projects.
You anticipate monthly meetings, quarterly meetings, or it kind of just depends on what's on their agenda, I imagine.
I think it's going to ebb and flow based on what's on their agenda. I think you want to start with a monthly meeting, and then hopefully maybe, you know, things are going well enough that you can go down to quarterly or something like that. But it'd be great if you have to meet once a month to talk about projects that are going on.
So you anticipate like our neighborhood associations submitting stuff to this board for approval and things like that? Is that kind of, I guess I'm trying to let the citizens know how the process might work, or we don't know yet?
I think that's still, it still has to unfold. Really, you know, the basic responsibility will be look at public arts and beautification projects. It could be in a neighborhood, it could be in a corridor, it could be along the Riverwalk. So I think we're still going to, we've got to come together and figure that out yet. But now, by creating this committee, we've got a structure in place now. We can move forward in phase two and get people recruited and seated on the committee.
And under this board and that, they'll have ordinances and codes to kind of abide by or follow or have as a guide to them? Do we have those in place as far as, I know we have something that we approved about, like putting up murals and stuff.
Well, that would be the only ordinance that can really think that really specifically refers to this particular body would be the appeals of the mural ordinance. Everything else is, you know, if you're going to put a piece of public art along the Riverwalk or in a park, you're going to go first to the parks, first to the parks board and bounce it off of them or vice, something like, so this board's going to have to work in cooperation with that. We also are going to be doing things within the right of way, so that's a privilege or an encroachment or something like that. So you're going to be dealing with the planning mission and things back before council.
Thanks for the information. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I took them away from Carolina.
Every single one.
Would the city clerk please take the roll?
Peck.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
We now have new ordinances. There are four of them, and if I read this right, there will be no action taken on any of the four. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Ordinance 16-90, approve amendments to the city of Oshkosh Municipal Code, Chapter 19, and repeal Section 25-119 pertaining to parks and recreation, the regulation of boat launches, fishing docks and piers, parking, parking and boat launch user fee, and zoo entrance fee. Is there any discussion from the audience? Just keep going.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Binder. I live on 30 Bowen Street. And I actually have a letter to read from a neighbor of mine who is unable to be here I also want to say that I concur with everything that he has pointed out. He's calling this paper precedence. The foot of Bowen Street, that portion from Bay Shore Street south to the Fox River, is historically and functionally a fire lane. The dock which has been rebuilt for recreational fishing was positioned and used to hold the city fire trucks to lower hoses into the Fox River and pump water to fire locations before the construction of fire hydrants. The first home to be built in this area was the home of Stanley Webster, one of the first white settlers. A monument stands on the southwest corner of Bowen and Bay Shore in his memory. The second house to be built on the foot of Bowen Street was 14 Bowen, some 115 feet from the dock in 1960 by the late Vern Eggers. Mark, who I'm reading this letter from, purchased this home from him in April of 1974.
Excuse me one second. Is this the place to?
It depends on, maybe a question, is this about the sidewalk or about parking regulations?
He covers several issues on that.
Okay, because this is only about the parking issue, not about?
No, this is-
Excuse me.
This one is the-
Yeah, this is only about the hours of the boat launch. This has nothing to do with the sidewalk.
Oh, okay. So you want me to go sit down by my dish and just read later?
Depends on what you have to say. I'm just, this is a very limited-
That would be the next one, I believe.
Issue. Just because the word Bowens on it doesn't mean it necessarily relates. This has to do with the hours of the boat launch.
The parking and the-
The fishing dock.
The next, 1691, I think, is the parking side of this.
So why don't you stay there and we'll just move on to the next ordinance because you're a little out of place. There's no action. We go to the next ordinance, which is 16-91, approve parking regulation changes on 10th Avenue and Bone Street. Now you can continue.
Should I continue reading this whole?
You're in the right sequence. We've got it in the right place.
Thank you. Mark has improved the shoreline with concrete and rock to hold back the ever-present erosion of the shoreline from boat wake and storm action across the mouth of the Fox River from the west. He has cemented the concrete slabs together from his old driveway for strength and picked up bushes, bushes, excuse me, bushes of debris which floated in the rocks and onto grass where the water rose high enough to inundate the lower portions of the shore and roadway. If it were not for the relatively short distance, approximately one-fourth mile from the railroad bridge, the erosion from southwest and westerly winds would have devastated this shoreline years ago. Only with constant repair and maintenance has the shoreline been partially preserved. It is this property the city wants to entrench along the, entrench across and then dredge deeply into the water basin floor to fit a large and expensive five-foot, eight-foot aqueduct. No one has asked him permission to excavate on this frontage. Calls and letters to the city attorney for conference have gone unanswered by her from The city engineer plans indicate the widening of the traveled street from the present 26 width in front of his home to 28 feet. This is to provide parking on one side of the street. The street as proposed will be- The street as proposed will be dangerously close, as little as two feet, to the existing shore and at a vertical level similar to the existing street level. You may ask why this is being done, and the answer you will get is to improve the access to the Bowen Street fishing dock. Further, you will be told that this widening is necessary because of the addition of a five-foot sidewalk on the east side of the street, which none of the neighbors want, and will make the improvement, or the movement of the road to the west necessary to fit the proposed 28-foot road. I'll skip the part about the sidewalks. If the underlying reasons for all this unnecessary expense to the inhabitants and the city taxpayer is for easier access to the Bowen Street dock, he frankly doesn't get it. The proposed cul-de-sac is too small for equipment and any one making a drop-off fishing equipment legally nearly impossible because parked cars would prevent other traffic from turning around to exit the street without backing into private driveways. The closest parking place will be right in front of his home. Let us ponder this point for a few seconds as is now. The fishermen have just 20 feet to get onto the dock after taking equipment from their vehicles. With the new proposed changes of construction, they will have to park their cars in front of our homes and still carry and walk considerable distances to get to the dock, now carrying their equipment down the new five-foot wide sidewalk. By the way, the city does not want to provide any painted slots for these five parking places, and the handicap persons apparently are just playing out of luck because it will be first come, first served for parking slots. As for now, the handicap of Oshkosh have used private vans and also the cabulance to be dropped off to the, to fish. And the cab drivers actually help these persons to get all their equipment to where they're going to be fishing. As for now, the handicap of Oshkosh have used, oh, I said that already, seems to have worked quite well. He thinks that this new system is going to cause more problems than it was supposed to solve. Don't forget, all this expense, the sidewalk, the widened street, the encroachment on already tiny front yards is all due to a very few fishermen who want the city to make a freeway out of our little fire lane. With a vote to continue as proposed in this resolution, precedence to neighborhood dwelling will have been trashed for another city park in the name of progress, or Oshkosh on the water. A vote to add more than curb and gutter to this portion of Bowen Street is a slap in the face to every taxpaying citizen of Oshkosh and should bring to mind the question, why are surrounding communities growing while Oshkosh stagnates and limps from one special event to the next? You, the common council, have passed resolution after resolution without the whole truth. The truth or half-truth you have been given is from employees of the city and other volunteers of whom may have conflict of interest in their recommendations. This is not healthy for progress or the people of Oshkosh. Please offer amendments that will preclude the expansion of the foot of Bowen Street from Bay Shore to the Fox River and to include only curb and gutter on the 28-foot wide street with no sidewalk or parking, as has been the case since houses were built. Thank you for your patience and consideration. Signed, Mark Radel, 14 Bowen Street.
Next we have ordinance 16-92.
Does anybody else who wants to talk in that? Because Sheriff's here and you just tend to have-
Come forward, please.
Come on forward.
I'm the house next to the dock. We are actually less than 40 feet from the actual dock. Did you say something about changing the hours on the dock?
It's to conform with the park ordinance that the dock would only be open from sunrise till 10:00 PM, correct, Mr. Mauer?
Yes. So that, that will remain as-is?
As-is, correct. All we're, all we're doing is there's some other parts, sir, that-
It's actually just moving from one section of the code to a different number.
Section of the code, correct. And making everything uniform through all our parks for fishing.
That's, that's fine. We, that's one of the reasons we felt comfortable buying that home. We would have some control. That sign also says, no loitering.
Correct.
Fishing dock. Mr. Radel's letter addressed quite a few of the issues I wanted to do. I can step back up if you want, or I can give you my two or three points right now for this situation.
It's about parking.
Just about parking. Not the- Parking portion of it.
Parking and address the sidewalk later?
Uh-uh.
All right. I'll, if it's all right with you, repeat later.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak about this ordinance? I see no one.
I just want, Mr. Sheriff, I see in the audience, this is also 10th Avenue, if you have any comments about the parking on 10th Avenue?
No, we weren't that old.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I just wanted to-
And I would just point out, just as a clarification, Mr. Collins sent you a revised memo. There was some, a little bit of confusion following the traffic review. So there's nothing about ratcheting in the agenda, and you probably won't see it, so never mind.
Thank you. Right. Ordinance 16-92, amend description of boundaries and speed limit ordinance pertaining to Oshkosh Congress Avenue. Does anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? If not, we'll move to ordinance 16-93, and again, there'll be no formal action taken on this item. Re-adopt municipal code book. Would the audience like to come forward? Next we have pending resolution, resolution 16-94, approve final resolution for special assessments, contract number 16-04, paving, sidewalk, driveway utilities, first local street concrete paving program north side area. Does anyone in the audience that would like to come forward?
This would be where the discussion, this would be the discussion, the sidewalk portion of that.
Steve Lindo, 2 Bowen Street, back again. This is quite a project. It's, it's beautiful. But you folks represent the citizens of Oshkosh. Even though Steve Godey's done a great job of presenting this, there's a couple of things that he didn't quite come out and tell us. I'm the number-one house next to the dock. The way it's been explained to me by Mr. Godey is that I pay for one-third of the street, the city pays for the second, the center of the street, and the property on the other side pays for the other third. There's nobody over there. So the city is picking up $29,000 a street for my property. I have 115-foot supposedly a frontage. A sidewalk alone is $2,000. It's five feet wide. Ordinances say four feet for a street under 50 feet wide. We don't, the reason Mr. Godey said five feet is that he'd have to put bumpouts in that sidewalk so that strollers could pass each other with all the traffic on that street. Even Mr. Engle said there isn't any traffic on that street. There's also six built-in bumpouts on that street. They're called driveways. We don't need a five-foot sidewalk. The street itself, they want to put down a concrete sidewalk. Hopefully all of you have been down there. This is a destination for a fishing dock. I don't understand what they mean by destination to a fishing dock. It's not a park, it's a fishing dock. People have walked down the street forever. If we have to have a sidewalk, it should be four feet wide. It would save me alone $400. The assessment for the sidewalk in front of that 115 feet is $2,000. 400 bucks is 400 bucks when it shouldn't even be there. The concrete street itself, Mr. Godey says the concrete has lasted longer and is better than asphalt. Well, that may be true. And he says that the prices are somewhat comparable, but not the work that has to go into putting all the reinforcing and the cutting and the laying of the concrete versus laying down asphalt in one day. That has two things. Number one, the concrete street has to cure. In order to be viable for a warranty, it should cure at least four, possibly five weeks. And it has to be laid in two separate parts. They can't lay one whole street. The asphalt can be laid in one day, cars can drive on it. So the expense and the inconvenience of the concrete on a super, super street, actually, I just saw a TV program last week called Modern Marvels. That's what we can call this street, incidentally. But it was about asphalt. And asphalt is pretty predominant in the streets in the United States of America. According to what they say, there's four million miles of roads in the United States, 94% of them are asphalt. I think it's a very, as I said, you people are stewards for the citizens' tax dollars. We need to take a very good look at this project to see if we can put that money in an area that could actually use it, rather than a street that's very short, dead end, has sick properties on one side of the street, to a destination fishing dock, and I'd still like to know what that means. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? If there's no one, I'll bring it back. They're just sitting down.
Okay.
If there's no one coming forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Council discussion, questions?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Godey. To Mr. Lindo's concerns, originally this was proposed to be an asphalt street, and after analysis, I guess, in the engineering department and that determined to make it concrete, can you kind of go into why that change was made?
The initial thought was that we were going to be putting a storm sewer down through here, limiting utility work. We're going to treat it very similar to some of the other dead-end streets. The dead end of, Hardney comes to mind with limited access, no parking arrangements. As we were going through the design process, it was brought to my attention that this was identified in the outdoor parks and recreation plan to improve access, including sidewalk and parking for the facility. Hence, we changed gears and we're looking at making it a more full street versus just a asphalt, a wide asphalt pavement to serve a few residences for drive access.
He also has a concern about the width of the sidewalk. If we would amend to four feet, would that be an issue? Are we compliant in all cases if we go from four feet to five feet, or will we not be compliant?
ADA recently updated their regulations to five feet for sidewalk in the public right-of-way. It does allow provisions to go to four feet with five-foot areas at certain intervals for allowing wheelchairs and disabled people to pass. I'm not sure what that interval is. Driveways may not be eligible for that because everything would have to be at 2% or under cross slope.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So Steve, you can stay, if you'd stay there. So part of the reason that we are putting the five-foot sidewalk in is to address accessibility to the citizens of Oshkosh.
Correct.
Across the city as well.
Correct. Anyone that wants to-
So people that want to visit different neighborhoods or access things in that area. So we are addressing all of the citizens of Oshkosh as part of this with that.
Correct.
And related to concrete versus asphalt, concrete does have a longer lifespan, correct?
Concrete has less maintenance involved in getting it to the same lifespan, yes.
All right. So it is, it is, while asphalt may be less upfront, the long-term costs of asphalt will eventually outpace concrete.
Yes, and that seems to be especially the case here with the quality of stone aggregate that we have for the limestone for the concrete, to make it a much stronger material.
So it's, it's a matter of being frugal, it's, it's a matter of being cheap or frugal. Frugal is making sure that your long-term cost is actually less than, is making sure your long-term costs are as minimal as possible as opposed to cheaping out on the front and then paying significant amounts of money on the backside.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
One more quick question, Steve. There were some comments made at the last council meeting about DNR issues or DNR concerns. We would have to pull permits and approve plans and everything because of how close to the, to the river it is, correct? So all that has to be pre-approved before we can even move forward with the project, correct?
Correct. The application is into the DNR for the essentially excavation dredging in the bottom of the river to install the storm sewer, the land disturbing activities. Our, John Ferris, the stormwater supervisor, has had discussions with the DNR person regarding that this week, has been supplying the additional information they have requested.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
If I could just speak on this, the sidewalk issue. I'm a member of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee as well, and we have been looking at all of the sidewalks or lack thereof in the City of Oshkosh, and we have identified this area as, as an area that is lacking in this infrastructure. We do recommend that this goes in as the five feet. We would like six if we could get it, but we, we did go to the five.
I know there was, there was some mention of the five-foot by eight-foot box culvert that was intended for this area and being below the water table. And as a member of this, both as a council member but also as a member of the Stormwater Utility, Oshkosh has several hundred outfalls, of which the majority are submerged.
That is correct.
So this is not out of the ordinary for Oshkosh because of the, the way that the water operates in the City of Oshkosh. It's not unheard of, and we've made very good use of our existing structures.
Yeah. Just a couple of comments I'd like to make on this. Having, I serve on the Parks Board, and, you know, this council's approved our park plan. We've approved the, the outdoor recreation plan. We also tentatively have an ordinance to allow parking in that area. You know, I think if we approve parking, we got, we got to approve the sidewalk in the same sense because I think we would have a liability issue if we say, you can park there, but you're going to have to walk on the street. And now if a citizen would get hit and we didn't provide them a sidewalk, you know, that, that may expose us to, to an issue. I totally understand the concerns of the citizens. It is a very expensive project, but it's one that probably needs to be done for the future of Oshkosh down the line. Yes, these citizens have lived there for a very, very long time. I appreciate all their hard work. I appreciate them coming to all the meetings and voicing their concerns, but what about 20 years from now? As that area changes and as some of that area changes, we have to look to the future of Oshkosh. The dock has been there forever. Yes, at one time it was built to be strictly for the fire department and a, kind of a, just an area to get to the water, to get water, but it is part of- But it is part of our neighborhoods. We're investing in our neighborhoods. We're investing in infrastructure in Oshkosh to reduce flooding, to have better water, better storm sewers, sanitary sewers, all that. So this is just another piece of the puzzle of putting together a complete city and a complete Oshkosh. And then also having the opportunity, hopefully, that more citizens can use the dock, use the facilities, obviously be courteous to our citizens that are in that area because this is all new, you know, that they're going to have to deal with. And it's just like any new subdivisions or other areas of the city, as Councilmember Pansky mentioned, that we want to get sidewalks into and make more accessible, make it safer for all our citizens. And yes, it is a $3 million project, but I think it's one that's needed in the city of Oshkosh. So I'll be supporting it.
There was a lot of discussion about representing all the citizens of Oshkosh. And the infrastructure improvements on this end of the road represent a culmination of an investment that has been made further up Bowen Street as well. The infrastructure that goes as far north as some of the projects that we did close to Murdoch Street, those are all connected in a system of how our sanitary sewer works and how our stormwater works. So we're not building this in isolation. This is part of a long-term plan. And I'm sure James could fill us in in the amount of time that goes in on the backside to make sure that when we do these projects, we do them frugally. And we do them to maximize our money now, but also to minimize our costs in the future.
If I may, just one correction to the gentleman's statement. The work is done on the front end, not on the back end. But yes, we understand the concerns of the citizens. Change is something that none of us want to see, but we have to sometime, we have to change to continue to move forward. And yes, we are, we do represent the citizens of Oshkosh. And in doing that, we are stewards of the taxpayers' money. And with the city picking up 2/3 of the cost of this, we as a council need to address the overall cost of this. And so therefore, that is why we have chosen, as Mr. Godey pointed out, the concrete versus asphalt. We don't have, we're not just making a decision based on today, six months, a year from now. We're making these decisions based on five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. So yes, we, this council has heard your concerns. We understand them. But again, this is in the benefit of the city of Oshkosh. And that's who we represent here. And that's why I am supporting this particular project as well.
If there are any further comments or questions, counsel, the city clerk, please take the role.
Pack?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Karyt Six.
This takes us to a new resolution, Resolution 16-95, award bid for public works contract number 16-04 to Dorner, Inc., for paving, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities. First local street concrete paving program, North Side area, $5,940,305.41. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this? See no one coming forward, I will bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. The city clerk, please take the role.
Pack?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Karyt Six.
Resolution 16-96, approve amendment to previously approved plan development for installation of an electric message center signed within the Universal Business Park, 2340 State Road 44. Taco John's Plan Commission recommends denial. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Tom Sharp, and the address is 1621 Miracopa Drive. I'm here in support of the electronic message center. And I'm the property owner directly to the west of Taco John's. And I don't see where it's any liability or where it would cause my site any problems. And two buildings to the east of Taco John's on the same side of the street is Chase Bank. And they have a pylon sign. And then four buildings to the west of Taco John's on the same side of the street has an electronic message center. And then if you go across the street, which there's Verve Credit Union there, they have an electronic message center, and they're right in the Universal Business Park. If you're familiar with the whole State Road 44 area, there's every type of use that you can think of in that area. So I guess I don't see where the center, this electronic message center really causes a problem. We go before Plan Commission, and we lost four to three. And some of that's due to the fact I didn't explain myself, didn't explain the situation well, and the owner was out of state, so he couldn't be there as well. The Plan Commission was really put in a difficult spot, although I think we would have won the vote, you know, had the owner been there and explained his situation. But part of what was tough for the Plan Commission was the owner of Taco John's had a permit pulled, and then he did go ahead and put a sign up that was different than the permit. He now apologizes for that and knows he should have handled that situation differently. And this electronic message center is really important to his ongoing business. So that's my thoughts on this. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer.
Counsel?
I think I'll wait till when we are considering this, if there's anyone else that wants to speak.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address this issue from the audience? I see no one coming forward, so I bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Birch? Again, for the people that don't see the things that we do in the full, when we get the full agenda, staff did write a memo, correct?
Correct.
Could you summarize the memo?
Well, we, the staff was in support of this request. It is, the sign itself is consistent with the zoning ordinance regulations, so it does meet those requirements. Where they ran into the issue was they went through, put up a sign without getting a permit, and then without coming back and getting the amendment. I think part of the reason, and I've seen at the Plan Commission, there's a frustration when we, they've been seeing a lot of these issues lately where somebody will do something with the knowledge that they're doing it, they either need a permit for it, or they're just doing it until they get caught. And they've had to deal with a lot of those situations, especially with the design standard stuff lately. And a lot of those are things that we can't resolve. It's frustrating to us as staff because we can't resolve something that doesn't meet the zoning ordinance requirements. So I think the Plan Commission got caught up in a lot of that. With this particular sign, the sign itself is, it meets the base standards of the zoning ordinance. So and what they did, they ran a little bit of a follow-up of the covenants at the time, but the GOEDC did approve the variance request to the covenant. So from that basis, with them supporting the, with them supporting the sign request, that was why we were able to write a staff report that was supportive of it.
So to summarize, it meets zoning requirements, it meets the covenant requirements, but it didn't meet the requirements that were originally set in the conditional use permit.
Correct. The conditional use and plan development.
All right. You know, this is one of these damned if you do, damned if you don't decisions. We have rules in place. We have the Plan Commission. We have conditional use permits where things are set that this is what you will do. The, this particular business owner knew what they had to do. They went and they pulled the permit. While, yes, it meets zoning, it didn't meet what they were approved to do. They said, we want to do this. The city said, okay, you can do this, but here are the requirements for you to do this. And I understand that, you know, we still need zoning requirements and everything, so staff approves this and everything. But this puts council, this is where we kind of earn our money here. You know, it sets, my concern is that we set a precedent where even though they can check off these, make checks in these checkboxes, this big one, which was the first one that should have been checked off, wasn't checked off. And I really don't appreciate, and I don't want to ever manage by exception because that's a, that's a tough position to be in. Because once you do that, then you sit there and you go. The next person that comes in says, well, I want to move the line this far. Because you moved it for this guy six inches, now I want to move it eight inches. Next one goes 10 inches, next one. And the next thing we know, we don't have anything. So I, right now, I'm still, I mean, I've been back and forth, so I really don't know where I'm going to go on this. My gut tells me that we need to follow what the rule was, that you knew you were supposed to do this. And I totally understand that. We had the same, we had a situation in previously where another old business owner went and knew what they had to do, said, no, I think this is going to be better. They went out, and this council made the, I think we made the precedent that, no, you will be, you will do what you need to do now. But the sign's already up, correct?
Correct.
Any idea what it would cost, Mr. Sharp, if you may be able to answer that? What would the cost be of having to replace the sign to doing what was originally approved and by the city?
Well, I was not involved at all in the student permitting process, so I'm not sure what would be involved with that from a cost perspective. And he did, you know, once he heard, this was turned down by the Plan Commission, he did take this seriously after I talked to him, and he did take the sign dark, right after he heard from me saying, he's turning the sign off and saying, well, I know I've done wrong here. And so I didn't want to.
Yeah, we did get a memo that the sign has gone dark, but that doesn't mean the sign will always, is, stay dark. The question is, it comes down to either we say, no, you put the sign in the way it was supposed to, or this particular sign continues to sit there and be dark. So anybody else got something?
Counsel, go ahead.
I just had a question. I mean, was it blatantly, intentionally done? Or was, is this one of the things where you have somebody who's an investor that's not always in the area and may, you know, hire out? I mean, any, any idea if this was intentional? Unfortunately, the gentleman's not here to speak.
He did send us an email.
Okay.
So there was some email correspondence that came through the city manager's office because
No, we did, yeah.
For some technical difficulties. But the business owner did address that concern in that email. So I don't know if you had a chance to see that. But throughout the process, he does admit that he has another location in the city that has the manual type of operation sign. And then he had discussions with his builder about the electronic board and was told by, told that the permit could not be gotten, and we were in crunch time to get the business open. He says, and I quote, "I proceeded independently and installed the electronic board. I truly apologize for this action. I had listened to some bad advice, and instead of relying on the system to get what we needed, I took the wrong path. I understand through my communications with Tom that the Plan Commission has turned down the updated request by one vote." And that this matter will again come before a decision for the city council. The sign is vital to our business as it draws much-needed attention to our site, especially when we only have a short monument sign versus a pylon sign. And then he goes into the conditions around his property that were mentioned by Tom before. So That was in that email. So yes, he did take onus to try and ratify the process with his builder, and he ran afoul of the Plan Commission. That being said, his gesture of good faith, making the sign go dark, doesn't go unnoticed to me. And the consistency with our zoning and the properties in the area is also on my mind, as well as the covenant variance from GOEDC. As an employee of a business that has an EMC in front of its business, I understand how these drive consumer behavior. And in a business like his, taking the time and energy every morning to send a staff member out to change the sign, whereas you can set a program and be, have that done automatically for you. I understand the Plan Commission's denial. And that is, you didn't follow the rules or the process, therefore, we say no. I also understand staff's point of, it's consistent with our zoning, it has the blessing of GOEDC, and it is in a business corridor. This isn't in a residential area. So I'm going to support this because it's consistent with the use around and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Birch, our comprehensive plan for this area.
Correct.
So while the process wasn't followed, which I'm disappointed in because I've had dealings with this business owner previously, and I've had nothing but positive experiences with him, outside of my role as city, the city council. The fact that he's willing to own up to that and say, hey, I made a mistake, says something. But I sincerely hope that we don't have to run into these ever again, and that we don't have to draw lines in the sand.
I'm also a member of the Plan Commission, so I was at this meeting, and there was a lengthy discussion about this. And it really came down to, this is not the first time where we've issued a permit and the person does what they want to do anyway. And they come back begging forgiveness. The issue really was, we issued a permit, gave approval, and it didn't happen. I think we, as a council, have to realize, do we want to, do we want to manage the city by exception? Or a lot of thought goes into our policies, procedures, a lot of staff time, a lot of taxpayer dollars in these. And then every so often, we find ourselves, well, I didn't mean to do it, I didn't understand it. I think it's a dangerous position. I mean, do we want to, do we want to run the city in a responsible manner or run it by exception? That's my point. And this is not the first time it's happened at the Plan Commission level.
I have a question. What is the fee when somebody does this, when a permit has been approved and they don't follow the rules of the so-approved permit?
Right now, with the inspections, it's a triple permit fee when you come back on that. I don't know what it's
What have, what has he been assessed in a fee so far?
He hasn't applied for the permit yet, so he's not, or a new permit, so he's not got, he's not got hit with a triple permit fee yet. And it comes back to apply for the permit to update, that'll be a triple permit fee on the inspection side. Our fees on the zoning side aren't yet in, aren't yet in effect. They won't be in effect until March 1st. He did have to pay the Plan Commission review fee to bring it back through the process, though.
And he's paying those? There hasn't been any objection to that? Thank you.
The one thing I just, I want to add is that this is very frustrating to us, and this happens to us more often than not. More often than not, you don't see it come to you. In this particular case, and I can't defend the process, had the EMC been on the original proposal that came through, we would recommend it forward at the time. So we would have supported the request originally, and we, again, we supported the request when it just recently came through. We think because it's consistent with the zoning and with the general area, that's why we support it. It's very frustrating, we understand that. But from, just on our end, we're still supportive of it. We don't like the process, we can't defend the process. That's why we're building in some institutional, some penalties for doing this. Now, is triple fee going to be enough at some time down the road? We'll evaluate it. This is -- it's uncommon. It doesn't happen as much as you think, but it does happen. And at least on this one, we don't have to sort out the zoning. We don't have to sort out the fact that it's not consistent with the zoning code. This one meets the zoning code. It's tougher when somebody comes in. We had another one on the plan commission two weeks ago. They put in a window or they downsized a window without getting permits, and it's -- there's no way we can make the window meet the code, so we have to figure out a way to sort that out without trying to have that person rehab their whole kitchen. So, they come to us ahead of time, so it's easier for us to work out. This particular one, because they meet the zoning ordinance requirements, there's not much other in the process for us to work out.
When it comes to the purview and the scope of responsibility of the plan commission, the plan commission's job is to review the merits of proposals as they relate to the zoning ordinance and building code, health and safety. Is that the general scope of the?
Look at the zoning ordinance. Does a development -- is a development consistent with the comprehensive plan for the city and consistent with the zoning ordinance requirements? Those are the two main things that they're going to -- that they'll be looking at.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you correctly, staff recommends that this should be approved because it meets the merits of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive land use for the area. And what I'm gathering is that the plan commission took exception with the process by which this was done because this is becoming a pattern in the development community to ask for one thing and do something else. So, the plan commission, the way my mind is wrapping around this, is that the plan commission stepped outside of their scope of responsibility and focused on the process rather than the merits of the individual proposal.
Tough one to answer, huh, Darren?
I'm going to agree with some of this number one.
I'm not asking you to respond to that. That is, that's how I'm viewing this. This is my own personal. I don't -- you don't have to answer that. But having read the transcript of the plan commission meeting minutes, I think this is a case of some members of the plan commission are offended by the lack of procedure. The following of the rules of what they approved, it didn't happen. And so, they're disappointed with this property owner, but holding this property owner accountable for the sins of other property owners. That's my interpretation and how I read it. That being said, when if staff comes back and says, "Well, it's consistent with zoning and it's consistent with our comprehensive plan for the area." We're all humans. We all make mistakes. I'm looking at this, what's written in front of me, "The amendment to previously approved plan development installation for an electronic message center at this address." When I look at that, I don't see a reason not to support this.
I guess I concur with Councilmember Clark's analogy a little bit. I am disappointed because I like to support all our boards and commissions, and, you know, they voted against this, but with the other organizations that support it, with staff supporting it, the fine, you know, I guess as projects are starting to get done, I mean, I know our staff is probably understaffed, but at the same time, maybe as these projects start to move forward, we continue to get, maybe get out there a little more often and make sure they're complying with what the requirements are because maybe we'd have caught them putting that sign up maybe beforehand. I don't know that for a fact, but I don't think we can tighten our ordinances anymore. Our codes, we've gone through all that. As you said, we're going to be approving them shortly. We've tightened them. We got a fine in place here where the company is going to be paying a significant cost, but everything else is in accordance to everything that we're doing. So, I agree that we don't want to, you know, manage by exception, but at times, I just think that, you know, mistakes do happen, but I don't want our business community to think that they can continue to operate in this fashion because I think that that's bad because then it doesn't give our boards and commissions teeth. You know, we -- so, I am going to support it, but I think somehow, maybe, Mr. Roloff, we can work with our staff, Mr. Davis, your staff, to kind of, especially when there's maybe one that you kind of feel a little like, you know, there might be an issue here. They might not abide by everything that we put in place so that we can kind of keep an eye on that so we don't have to come back to this type of situation and put council in a tough spot. But if you would, if staff would have said, "No," if it didn't meet our other requirements, GOEDC said, "No," then I, you know, it would have been an easy one to say, "No, I won't support it." But in this case, not, I don't want any of our plan commission members to think I'm not respecting their decision, but in this case, I think we can go forward with it. Thank you.
Any further comments? Would you please take the roll?
Peck.
Aye.
Fansky.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
No.
Carrie, 5-1.
We now move to council discussion, direction of the city manager, and further agenda items, and there's nothing there.
Actually, Mayor, I do have just a comment. At this point, I know there's a couple of us that are participating in a community reading that is scheduled for tomorrow. As of right now, I do have to leave for Chicago in the morning. If something changes, I'll be there. If not, I will be gone for the day. So, my apologies to my other council members that may go.
Chairman Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not on the discussion and that, but the city manager gave us a hard copy of strategic plan. I just have one question, Mr. Roloff. I understand complete in progress.
Do you have it on the agenda?
It's on his agenda.
Is it?
Yeah, it's on his statement.
A couple of items down under my announcement.
Oh, I missed that.
Ms. Jenks will be here, our new HR generalist.
All right, very good. Thank you.
She's anxious to get that question. Courtney, you may as well start moseying up here.
I missed that.
That's okay. We're very happy that you're --
We're excited about it.
And then, I'm just going to put one pitch out there tonight, as I see Ms. Larson smiling. The, I want to, first of all, commend Harold Buckholz for his significant contributions and service to the Long Range Finance Committee, but Harold has decided to step down from the Long Range Finance Committee, and again, I thank him for his services. So, I'm making a very, very blatant pitch right now. If there's some citizens out there that would be interested in joining the Long Range Finance Committee, please contact Mr. Roloff's office or even Ms. Larson's office in the Finance Department. We could use, we're going to have some big shoes to fill, but we're looking for someone to come and step forward for the Long Range Finance Committee.
And I'll add to what Deputy Mayor Peck said. We have, we are always looking for people to join our many boards and commissions, so please fill out an application.
All right. Not me again, huh?
Oh, yes. Council announcements.
All right. It's, again, you know, just a very subtle plug. March 5th, the Oshkosh Police Department, the Oshkosh Fire Department, every year, they get together and they put on their Guns and Hoses hockey game. And actually, I'm wearing stripes tonight, but that particular night, I'll be wearing stripes again, but those will be my black and white ones, and I truly enjoy participating in this. But I do urge our citizens to come out to the Oshkosh YMCA on 20th Avenue. Puck drop is at 3:00. There will be lots of raffles and prizes there. The, it's a fundraiser for our local veterans organization, so Ms. Deener, I'm sure we'll probably see you there. But again, March 5th, Saturday afternoon, the Oshkosh 20th Street YMCA, 3:00 PM face off, the Guns and Hoses hockey game. It's a really good game, and it's a great opportunity to support our veterans.
Okay, moving on. Citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the council, the common council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidate or other electioneering. If anyone would like to step forward.
I want to thank Tom Peck for inviting me to come back to the council meeting. We've been very busy with my husband. He had a very major surgery done and stuff, and he's making good progress. And my name is Patricia Deener, and I come to you this evening in regard to talk about We just had our street done a couple of years ago, and the whole side, one side's are breaking right down to nothing. We have big ditches. We've got water sitting. You know, if someone would have listened to me, I went out petition for concrete, but you know, wait a couple of years, wait a couple of years. Well, number two, I can't believe they had a -- I'm trying to think of a word. A grader outdoing the streets. I know they go down Jackson, but they're coming down all these little streets. And you know, that gentleman, I felt pretty bad knowing that he's using this grader, and he can't even make the turns without probably hitting a telephone post. He's sliding all over. I mean, I know we're shorthanded with staff and stuff, but I don't think that's a good idea, having him out doing that kind of stuff with a grader and not on these little streets. But I'm really disappointed in our street. I'm trying to get our home fixed up and trying to make our, my yard nice, and now I'm sitting with a street with water sitting and big trucks are coming down. I mean, sure, I had people coming in my area to do my garage and all that stuff, but it's getting worse. And Dave Peck is not here no more. David Peck out. And I want to address it to you because I have talked to your supervisors. They'll say they're going to come back and patch stuff, and that's all I hear. And if you want to take a look at it, it starts from Custer down to Tennessee, and it's really breaking up more, that it's just cutting right in more and more. And I want to take the opportunity, I didn't get to come to a couple of meetings, but I know that I got to go personally to meet the chief of the police department, Mr. Smith. I did make my addresses about certain things, and I do appreciate him bringing up having cameras on the officers and videos, and I think it's going to help everybody, the citizen and the officer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other citizen that would like to come forward? I see no one, so now, city manager announcements and statements. Mr. Roloff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Status of the citizen survey. We have mailed out, or the university mailed out 1,500 citizen surveys last week. If you were one of the lucky 1,500, I encourage you to fill it out. It's due on March 7th. For those of you not lucky enough to get it in the mail, the online version will be available around March 1st. But we do want people to do the write-in survey, and if you still want to do it, you can do the online version if you didn't get a write-in survey. And that'll be available from about March 1st to March 15th. And we'll get the results around May 1st, and copies will be distributed to council, and we'll get it on the website after that's done. So, wanted to mention that. Another one, the Algoma Park Neighborhood Association. You may recall that group felt that they maybe they were a little too geographically large, so that group dissolved, and one of the areas of that neighborhood created a brand-new neighborhood association. The Ferry Crossing Neighborhood Association is what they're naming themselves. It's just one section of that larger area. I'm not sure if that other group is going to organize, reorganize as a separate group or what they're going to do, but hopefully, they will, and we'll have an extra neighborhood association. Follow-up to the parky study workshop, I did say I would come to you within one month. The report I have is that we have had discussions with Walker Parking Consultants about what the next step in the process would be, and they're willing to help us, of course, at a price, to assist us in specific policies and changes that we would need to make. One of the outcomes of the study was that we absolutely need to change some of our policies. I know if you're on the parking utility, you understand what I'm talking about, and even if you aren't on the parking utility, you understand because you've gotten so much input from businesses and residents in the downtown area. So, we'll be, hopefully, the next meeting, certainly if not by the next meeting, by the meeting after, we'll have a contract for Walker to finish the work that staff wouldn't have the capability of doing in-house. And with that, now, the strategic plan fourth quarter 2015 update, Mr. Herman mentioned it. Courtney Jenks of our human resources staff is tasked with monitoring the progress of the strategic plan, and she's going to give the council a little update based on what you already have, and I believe Andy has something on the screen for our viewers at home.
Okay. So, I kept the same template as Brian Chapman had. I just modified it a little bit. What we did is we added a key at the top, which shows the check marks are the items that are complete. The up arrows, which are in green, are in progress. The down arrows that are red are below the strategic plan, and then the circle, which is like an orange color, is caution. So, that's what I'll be going over now here, actual plan.
I did have a question for you, and I think this is what Steve was getting at.
Yep.
What does exactly caution mean? Does it mean that we're, it's falling to the wayside or something that maybe we should focus our priorities on differently?
It would be more of it's in progress, but we should maybe put more priorities to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. You'll see on the support economic development that the good majority of them are complete, and then there are some that are in progress. We did want to note that the GOEDC is complete, so I wanted to note that. And then, on the continue to strengthen our neighborhoods, there's the, wanted to note that there's nine neighborhood associations that we have, and then we're working on three more in 2016. And then, Mark's going to address the other ones for any that are marked in red.
Red or the yellow circles she's given to me.
Yes.
That's okay.
Can I just ask a question? On the in-progress, are we putting any type of a timeline on any of that stuff, or is that mostly kind of the generic sides of these strategic plans where we're just going to continue to, you know, work, like one, for example, on support economic development, we talk about work with stakeholders, you know, we're identifying the Buckstaff property, we're identifying the Pioneer. But are we putting any kind of timeline on some of these projects then so that we know that they haven't, you know, not only moved forward, but, you know, we want some results by a certain time?
Maybe I can help out a little bit with this process, too. That's a good question, Councilmember Herman. Some of these are not complete for a variety of different circumstances. Mark is going to talk about the ones that are cautionary or below progress, but the expectation for all of these was to try to complete them by the end of the strategic plan's tenure. And we want to, there's still a little bit of time before we move forward with the new iteration of the strategic plan, so we do have some time. Some of these issues, for example, are not complete because of a staff turnover, and we didn't have the staff available to work on a project. So, those are some of the examples for some of the ones that maybe aren't as far ahead as we would like them to be, but it's our expectation that we want to complete all of these before the end of the duration of the strategic plan. That's our goal.
And just maybe a follow-up question. If, and maybe this is hypothetical in a way, but if we start to move forward with the plan and we had identified it in this strategic plan, but it falls off the map, let's say at the update, is that something that staff is at least going to kind of keep an eye on or monitor or move forward and try to complete it even though it does no longer kind of meet our strategic goal?
Well, just to talk a little bit about that, council might recall when we went through the process, I believe this last time, we talked about gap analysis. So, we'll take a look at the progress of our goals, and then we'll take a look at the priorities. And you know, from experience that over time, sometimes those priorities change.
Right.
So, then, after we do that gap analysis, we'll match the priorities with the progress progress, and then council will tell us, hey, we think you need to focus on these because of the priority of it at this particular point in time. And when we have a priority that also matches with something that wasn't as accomplished to the level that the council feels is appropriate, those are the ones that typically have been the higher priority items going to the next iteration of the strategic plan.
Okay.
So typically, that's the way we kind of frame it moving forward, but certainly, it's, it's within council's purview to, to focus us in whatever direction they see fit.
Those were the major accomplishments that, and for the folks who are viewing it on, at home, it's a little tough to read, but the, the key thing there is when there's checkmarks next to it or a green arrow, it's either completed or making appropriate progress. So, what, what Courtney left with me was the last page, objectives falling short of goal, and I'm only kidding, we, we discussed, and I could give background to those. But there's only six items in our entire strategic plan that fall under that category, and caution is more yellow light, so not as bad as red, but certainly one that needs to be looked at. With a couple of them, they're more about measures, and for example, on page four, under Continue to Strengthen Our Neighborhoods, there's two, and they're both related to the Police Department, and Chief Smith and I have discussed these. One has to do with the number of drug-related overdoses. That really is something that is beyond the capabilities of the Police Department. Certainly, it's always a worthwhile goal. In fact, as the chief and I discussed it, it talked about reducing drug-related overdoses. Well, I would like it to be zero, and I think everybody in this room would like it to be zero, but the reality is, is that's a, that's a, it's just a reality of what we deal with. The goal was there 15, and I don't know if that's really the appropriate number, but that was the number that was set, but we had 18 overdoses in 2015. Did we fail? I don't think we failed, but we will only be satisfied when there's zero. I wouldn't be satisfied if it was 15 overdoses. If it was one of your family members, you wouldn't be satisfied either. Our goal is zero, it's always going to be zero, but that's one of those things that we have to strive towards. Visible presence in bike and foot patrols, we had fewer days in 15 than we did in 14, but the emphasis has been more on quality. I could send an, or the police chief could send an officer out on 10 bike patrols going around a single block, and if the officer doesn't stop and do anything, he can check it off, but if that officer goes around one block and makes 10 contacts, that's a much higher quality. So, it's quality versus quantity, and that's something that Chief Smith wants to look at and have some, some viable measures. The other two, or there's three in infrastructure, two of them have to do with, two ponds, one for Stringer Creek Land Acquisition, and the other one, Washburn West Town, the one over by the Shell Station over there. Both of those have been delayed due to staff turnover. That was Mr. Robbie's division, that when he moved into a dual role, a Public Works Director, until Mr. Ferris was hired, we had some shortfalls. But they've also been working, since this strategic plan was done, we had a little thing called the BEMIS Healthcare Packaging. That project has risen, so there's various reasons for those things. They're on, they're on task to get done, but we may not get it done within 2016, but it's not necessarily a bad thing, we're still making progress. Overhead clutter along gateway corridors, that's capital improvement plan. It's delayed due to funding restrictions. We've, you know, in the two years since we've done this, we adopted a borrowing plan that we're going to limit it. One of these areas is Ninth Avenue, we'd like to get that done, but we got to do it within our means, and, and we'll do that as time is appropriate. And then the last one had to do with accountability of special events. What it was, it is about building the pedestrian trail on Washburn, which the council eventually removed from the plan. So once the council made that decision, essentially, we could have wiped it off, but in the interest of showing what we had on the plan, we, we chose not to finish up with that goal. But of all, we have three pages chock full of projects we're working on, and only six of those that I just mentioned are ones that are, that are falling behind. And if you take a look at some of these others, for example, Create and Execute Citywide Economic Development Plan, the council's been given a draft. So we're, we're on our way to getting those goals done, and what I'm really encouraged at is by the time we meet up with Mr. Yankowski to do strategic planning in July, we have done a lot of this, and/or making great progress towards achieving our goals, which I think is something that we all need to be very pleased and proud of. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I would agree that with the progress that the city's made, and oftentimes, we hear, Oshkosh is lagging behind other communities, and I can tell you, from my experiences talking to our colleagues from other communities, Oshkosh is seen as a leader in many of the things that we're doing. And a lot, this isn't like one of these, yes, there's a lot of checkmarks, there's a lot of green arrows. These were not layup projects. These were not just little bitty, easy-to-take-care-of things. I mean, GOEDC, that was a four-year-plus project to get that going, and we have done that, and we're beginning to see the benefits of that. So, for those of you who say that Oshkosh is stagnating and falling behind, I would urge you to, Mark, this is on the website, correct? That we've got access to this? Put it on the first page? Please come out, take a look at this, and see what your city government, city staff, I commend all of the staff that's working on this. This is not just department heads, this is the line staff, these are the day-to-day workers of this. So this city is moving forward, and this council is, as we indicated, one of the next things is, is we're going to be setting our next workshop to develop the strategic plan moving forward into '16, '17, and '18. So, to everyone involved, great work, and we're going to continue doing this, and so, and if you have any questions, obviously, go out to the website, look at this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with that said, the last item under my reports is Strategic Planning Retreat. Looks like Mr. Yankowski is available for July 14th, so that's the date we're going to have, and we're working on a, a location. Try to mix it up a little bit, but someplace that is away from City Hall, but within town, so that we can focus on it for that day. So, if you can mark your calendars for that, that would be wonderful. And that's all I have, unless the council has any questions of me.
I have none. Anyone else?
No.
Can we now have a motion from Deputy Mayor Peck to go into a closed session?
I move that following the adjournment of this meeting, the council convene into closed session in the city manager's office pursuant to Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren G of the Wisconsin statutes, to confer with legal counsel, who will give legal advice concerning strategy to be adopted in regard to litigation in which the city is involved pertaining Joseph E. Kubiak and the Oshkosh Pub Crawl.
Second.
Peck.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.